Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. City Council meeting Tuesday, August 12th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. Roll call, Kaylee?
Councilmember Tiamson, here. Vice Mayor Grimm?
Here.
Councilmember Stafford?
Here.
Councilmember Richardson?
Here.
Councilmember Darmes?
Yep.
Councilmember Knight?
Here.
Mayor Marks?
Here, we're all here. Okay, the invocation is Chaplain Milton Carrero of Volusia Sheriff's Office. Please stand.
All right, let's pray. Father in heaven, we come to you as a humble servant, Lord. I'm a sinful and carnal being, but I ask through the atoning blood of Jesus that you may forgive all our sins, Lord, and that you may bring an atmosphere of light and peace, Lord, into this place, and that you may rebuke the devil, Lord. And please, may this meeting be fast and speedy, Lord, and that we may be humble and ask for your assistance in today's meeting. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
My allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, number one, absences, we have none. Number two, presentations and proclamations. Two A, William Reichman Retirement Proclamation. City of Orange City Florida proclamation, whereas the City of Orange City recognizes and celebrates the extraordinary service of William Bill Reichman Jr., whose distinguished legal career spans over four decades in municipal law, municipal litigation and public policy. And whereas since 1999, Bill has served as city attorney with honor and distinction, guiding elected officials and staff through complex legal challenges, legislative processes and long-term policy development, becoming an integral part of Orange City's modern governance. And whereas his legal expertise and unwavering dedication have resulted in transformative achievements, including the closure of the jail landfill, comprehensive rewrites of the city's land development regulations, sign code, zoning and utility codes, ensuring growth that is well-planned, compliant and community-focused. And whereas Bill further provided essential legal counsel in a wide range of additional matters, including stormwater and utility agreements, special assessment ordinances, police forfeiture cases, bond financing, fireworks and pain clinic regulations, and the drafting of a special event animal control internet cafe on unlawful burning and disstriving ordinances. And whereas beyond his work in Orange City, Bill has served as Assistant City Attorney for eight municipalities represented boards in zoning code enforcement and historic preservation matters, taught civil trial practice at Valencia College and shaped policy with the Florida League of Cities. And whereas through the steadfast dedication, deep legal insight and genuine care for the communities he has served, Bill has left an indelible mark not only on Orange City, but on cities and towns across central Florida, building a legacy of integrity, foresight and public trust. Now therefore, I Kelly Marks, Mayor of the City of Orange City, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proudly recognize and commend William Bill Reichman Jr. for his decades of exceptional service and countless contributions to our city. We extend to him our heartfelt gratitude and warmest wishes for retirement filled with joy, fulfillment and the knowledge that his work will continue to inspire for generations to come. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the official seal of the City of Orange City to be affixed on this 12th day of August 2025. Bill, not to put you on the spot, but would you like to say anything?
I wrote down a few things. Which should scare most people when a lawyer says that. But I did write down a couple of comments. I wanted to thank you so much for the opportunity or privilege to serve as the Orange City as its attorney. I've enjoyed working with staff, with dailies, managers, this council, prior councils. So many great people. As a team, to provide the citizens of Orange City with all the municipal services that they expect and deserve. I'm confident that this Orange City government has made living in our community better. I'm proud to be a small part of that. I will miss the collaborative process that makes Orange City government successful. Because of this experience, I am more confident than ever that this is true, that the best government is that government closest to the people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, we will miss you. I wanted to say that.
Thank you.
You're amazing. And enjoy your golfing and traveling and we'll be thinking of you.
I'm gonna have to find a golf course. It's open now on Tuesday evenings. I've never been able to do that before, so I'll have to find it.
You can make your own, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, number three, citizens' comments. Tom Idell?
Tom Idell, 339 East University Avenue. Good evening. I'm coming you tonight, August 12th, a mere 73 days into hurricane season. The reason I, it's important is because I believe the brand new roof is failing. And I don't think it'll hold, I believe it won't hold up in a wind, a wind event. We have loose and falling slate already. There's slates in the gutter. And when that happens in the middle of a roof, that's not a good sign. This is a serious problem because something that the citizens of Orange City just paid $600,000 for. I addressed the council before and I served on the committee that discussed the repairs needed. By the way, the roof that we ripped off was only 18 years old on a 75-year roof. It's my contention all along that the roof wasn't necessarily had to be removed. The night that you were, that you voted to go ahead and move forward, you did so based on false information. Assistant, the Assistant City Manager that very night read to you something that was not accurate. And I know that she knew it was not accurate because she was on the committee with us and other things were discussed. So where are we now? The new, the, the new roof has a two-year warranty on installation, which is good because the installation is failing. I saw numerous examples of improper installation while it was being done. I have photos and videos that I will be forwarding to you. The reason for me speaking to you tonight is twofold. Number one, get going on having the contractor come back and look at what the installation warranty. We've invested $600,000. And I also suggest that an independent roof consultant come in and look at what was done. It wasn't done to Florida wind uplift codes and I'm not gonna get deep into it. I'm going to, in December, you had an initial report, December 23, you had an initial report sounding disputed. We soundly dispute it with photos and video evidence. The, I will be sending, I, I got 30 seconds. I will be sending the mayor and each council member a packet of information with emails, photos and video evidence that shows that every, every member of the roof vendor selection committee was told of the misinformation contained in the original report. Staff knew as well, everyone knew. That, that came, they were all introduced that night and no one stood up and said, "The report you're reading is the report that we debunked." So there is two reports. There was four meetings that were, that were held that... Okay. I suggest moving forward that this board takes the a trust but verify stance moving forward on anything. Trust what you're hearing, but verify it. You'll be hearing from me with the, with the emails. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Adam Makker? State your name and address for the record, please.
Adam Makker, 313 Dirksen Drive in DeBury. I purposely did not prepare a speech for you because I just wanna speak from the heart because I feel that's the best way to touch people. And you know, I am so, what brings me here today is I am so incredibly disappointed in my country on a federal, state and especially a local level. You know, I have, and if there's one thing I accomplished here today is to get all of you and everybody in the audience to please visit my website. It's volusia-truth.com. On that website, you will find evidence of financial crimes facilitated through the clerk's office, implicating the highest level of law enforcement, all the way up through the CIA. All right, it's so incriminating that my website is blocked by FDLE servers. The FDLE can't even access my website. And what they're doing is they're double charging on court costs, sometimes 19 years after the fact. And if you, like me, if you buck and you say, "No, I'm not doing that because that's fraud", they put a team of corrupt police officers after you to make your life a disaster, you know, to keep it polite. And this is about, I started dealing, put it this way. In 2021, I had an almost a perfect credit. I had almost 850 Beacon Score. I had over 100, and to give you one example, I had almost, right at $100,000 in limit spread across five American Express cards. Before Volusia County started reporting false judgments to my credit profile, all those five cards got reduced to less than $15,000 worth of limits in one month and one, and one shot. That was before I knew what was going on. So these are very serious crimes, so I wanna repeat it again. It's volusia-truth.com. Please, everybody out here, take your time, go to the website. From, it's pretty self-explanatory. On the, on the homepage, there's a blog. It says Financial Crimes Blog. It explains everything. It says corruption or, I'm sorry, fraud exposed. You can see all of the fraud itemized in different ways. And this is a real, real problem. Because I, now in the mix of all this, when I was fighting it and I was saying, "Look, I shouldn't have to pay this", I'm now a falsely convicted felon. I can barely get a job at damn Amazon as a warehouse worker. I'm fighting for that because I've been convicted of scheme to defraud and fleeing and eluding, both cases which had no evidence. But because, and to give you a little background and try to keep it respectful, my father, who's now 73 years old, he was molested as a young boy by a priest nonetheless. And obviously, that's deep trauma that probably none of us understand, even myself included. And I've been through some trauma. And that trauma caused him, and he inherited about $30 million worth of real estate in 2015. So when you're, have a deeply traumatized person that has a lot of power, it can create hell. And it has for me, and that's why I'm, you know, and I'm, I'm here for the long haul. This is, this is not my first, I'm gonna come to every, sorry, every meeting here. Okay, I'm just, I just wanna say one last word, that I'm gonna be at every meeting from here on after until this gets resolved because this is a real problem and it's affecting every Orange City citizen. And hopefully, we can get these financial crimes on the agenda. That's my goal and I'll come back as long as it takes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here you go.
You too. James Wright? Can you wait till you get up to the? Sorry, we're streaming, so we gotta...
I believe he may wanna speak under a specific agenda item.
Skate park?
I believe so, yes. It should, does it say AD?
Yeah. Sorry about that. Okay, we're moving on. Tom Hewitt? This one's about the building facility funds.
My name is Tom Hewitt. I live at 1060 Tappan Circle. I just happen to have been going over the proposed city budget online. Y'all, y'all did great, but you couldn't hear yourself. I couldn't hear any of you. So y'all need to speak up in the, in the mics when y'all talk. Right now, allocated right now for a new public works complex, police station and fire station 68, there's $4 million allocated. Now, out of that allocation, that is for, now if I read this correctly, it's, it's been a while. Y'all had at one time, back in, I think, 2023, y'all had approximately $10 million in that account. Let me find the, it's in here. There, that's it. Y'all had 10,000, $10 million in that account. $5 million was from the American Rescue Plan Act. And in fiscal year '22, '23, the budget was further strengthened to fund a $5 million transfer from the general fund reserves. Now, in, in that, the, what is supposed to be happening is 3,000, something like $3,900 of that or $3,900 of that is supposed to go to the planning of the buildings. Just the planning of the buildings. All right? And then after that, you're supposed to have 3 million some odd dollars left in it that you could use for the completion of the buildings, if I'm not mistaken. Now, it's three buildings. And I understand it's expensive for a city government buildings because you gotta get everything correct. But the one building that I'm worried about that you do not have on here, okay, that is listed, is the City Hall. And I don't mean this City Hall. I mean the new City Hall as allocated in the master facilities plan back in 2020. Now, that building there isn't included in that. My question is number one, why? Because from what I gather from the meeting, which I'll speak on in a little bit, there's something wrong with City Hall. And, and I, I understand this is, these are all preliminary numbers and it's not final, the budget's not finalized. But it's something that you guys need to, need to think about. That's a lot of expenditure just for looking at something. And not a lot coming back into the repair of the facilities we have now, if they're falling down. Thank you.
Okay, the next one is parking at City Hall, Tom?
Okay. Parking at City Hall. Y'all have, as of right now, parking at City Hall allocated $3 million for City Hall parking. Y'all agreed to, back in May, y'all agreed to a, the 4.2.4 million dollar budget to tear down the shuffleboard courts and everything and repave it. Repave it, y'all had to plan and everything to repave. It's gonna cost us $2.4 million. Right now, y'all have $3 million allocated to that thing. Now, the reason why I also have this is because when doing this, y'all are gonna be putting in a separate, a number two vault for stormwater. Okay? Y'all already have one vault for stormwater now underneath the grassy or the sandy area between the driveways that we have now and the shuffleboard court. You already have one vault. And I believe there's two lift stations back here behind Waver Hall for that vault. If there's two lift stations for that vault and the storm that we had, even though it was a quote-unquote "one in a thousand-year storm", if those two lift stations couldn't handle what was in that and y'all put another vault in there, y'all have to add another lift station. If y'all add another lift station, where's it going to be with the planning of the parking lot? And how is that gonna react to the stormwater that we have? It's, it's, it's something that needs, and I understand y'all, y'all are doing a fabulous job. I'm not denotating anybody or, or bad any, it's just something y'all need to think about because sometimes it seems like y'all are putting the, the cart before the horse. This is what we need, but you don't know how to get there. Because not all the studies were done. I mean, I understand y'all had a engineering firm come out and take a look at everything and say, "Yeah, we can do this and this needs to come down and the shuffleboard court will cost us this much, this much without, this much without", well, y'all voted on it. I ain't saying anything more about it, other than y'all voted. And it seems to me that it's just a little premature with the facilities that are starting to go in that y'all want to do. Y'all wanna replace what, this is 68, right? Y'all wanna replace 68. You're gonna replace this building. My understanding, you're gonna be putting in a new City Hall. According to the facilities plan.
Okay, next one?
Yep.
Okay. Next one, City Hall, building and budget.
Okay, City Hall. Y'all have 1 million, 1.1 million dollars allocated for the, from the budget to repair, refurbish the interior of City Hall. As Mr. Idell said, I can even look outside and see lifted tiles. I can see fallen tiles from the repairs that we've already done. A half a million dollars, almost 600, $600,000 for that roof. All right? And you're still having problems. Now, my understanding from what I could, from what I could hear, y'all could tell me if it's not true. Y'all have mold asbestos in the floors and y'all want $1 million to repair that. Meanwhile, on the master facilities plan, voted back into 2020 from the City Council, your master facilities plan has a building going in at the dirt area. I mean, it could be in another area, but at the dirt area where the first vault is, on top of the vault. Y'all will be tearing down Waver Hall. According to the master facilities plan. Y'all gonna be shuffling everybody out to separate buildings. This building inside the police station here. You're gonna be putting people in Waver Hall. Y'all are gonna be putting people over at the clerks. Right? And it just seems to me that it's, y'all aren't looking, y'all see the picture, but the picture y'all described, you're not looking at what you've already said. This is what we would like to do on something y'all already voted. And I understand it's, it's not fixed until the council votes on it. But the council has already voted on it. So that's your goal, is to do what the council voted on. And if that's the case, then if you, if you're moving and putting a new building here, why tear up the parking lot to put a new building? Why not put the building in, then put the new parking lot in? I mean, it seems logical to me. And I understand we need parking now. I understand that. But in reality, y'all are gonna be putting in, what, 3 million, 4 million dollars on this? Plus the new, plus whatever, whatever it is. And then you're gonna be winding up, tearing it down in order to put in a new City Hall. Because you're gonna be eventually getting rid of this one and make it into a museum. If I'm not mistaken, from what, everything I've read, it just seems kind of strange to spend money on money on money. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other public comment that's not on an agenda item tonight? All right, we're gonna move on. Okay, number four, consent agenda. We would just need a motion for that?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion. We accept the consent agenda.
We have a motion, we have a second. Kaylee? Oh. Yeah, I was just gonna, I, any public comment on the consent agenda? See none? Bring it back to Kaylee.
Vice Mayor Grimm?
Yes.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Darmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiamson?
Yes.
Mayor Marks?
Yes, and the consent agenda passes. Number five, ordinances, first reading, ordinance number 691. Mr. Reichman?
We're actually gonna move down to 8A. So 8A, 8B and 8C all kind of tie in together.
Mayors, I understand that the agenda's a little bit different this evening. And the reason is, is because these all, these three agenda items are all interrelated. And for them to make sense as far as your, your action to be taken, there's a certain order in which you need to consider them. Thus, the agenda's set up a little bit differently this evening so that we can look at them in the order that makes sense for your, for your analysis and decision this evening. So the way that this is actually set up is you're gonna be moving to agenda items under Section 8, beginning with Section 8A, which is your review, analysis and, and consideration for approval of the sponsorship policy revisions.
Okay, Maddie McAllister. Thank you.
So what we're actually doing, Madam Mayor, is trying to save a little bit of time. We're going to give one presentation.
For all three?
On item 8A, B and C.
Right.
And then we'll come back and, and open it up for, for your discussion on each item.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Maddie McAllister, Public Information Officer. Tonight, we're gonna be going over our first reading of special event ordinance, the approval of the fee schedule resolution and the sponsorship policy changes. So we're gonna start. So we're gonna start with just a recap as to how we got here tonight. In February of 2025, staff brought four items to council, revisions of our insurance policy, special event ordinance request, sponsorship policy revisions and a fee schedule. At that meeting, council approved the fee, or I'm sorry, approved the insurance requirement resolution, adjusting the insurance and directed staff to draft a special event ordinance, draft a fee resolution and make changes to the sponsorship policy. So this evening, we'll be going through each of those three remaining documents. Starting with the sponsorship policy. This policy was initiated in 2016 and it has had two revisions since 2019 and 2022. Every three years, it seems that things change and we need to go back and revise it. So 2025, it seems like a good time to do that. Career requirements as the policy stands prior to this conversation is it's open for only registered 501(c)(3) businesses, which is nonprofits. And it's, all these events and programs have to be open to the public, benefit the public, serve a greater good, et cetera. Prior to this, we had a monetary donation of up to $1,000, not to exceed 50% of the total program's budget and in-kind services with no limit, no cap. So our request for the 2425 fiscal year, we, we sponsored nine nonprofit requests. $7,500 was given out in monetary funds, so donations to these events and programs. And we sponsored $19,747 in in-kind services. That is staff time, that is waiver of fees, usage of equipment, et cetera. So our total contributions for the 2425 fiscal year was around $27,247. In September of 2024, we did remove the line item funding, which was that opportunity to have a $5,000 donation from the city already pre-put into the budget. We did remove that in September of '24 at the direction of council. And then City Council at that time requested that we do the revision. So that's the background of what we're going through tonight. In February of '25, council gave us three things to revise in the sponsorship policy. The first one is revisions of city's contributions. We've moved from a monetary donation and in-kind services to just an in-kind services donation. Second change is revisions to the applicant eligibility. We've moved from just nonprofits to nonprofits and for-profit businesses with a home address in the municipal city limits of Orange City. And our third and final change is the revisions to the submission timeline. We no longer do an all-call over... We no longer do an all call over summer. We now are doing a forty-five, forty-five day from the time of event time of submission time. So the first one, when we're removing the funding, we are allowing in-kind services to cover application fees, rental fees, staff time, equipment costs, advertising of the event using social media, our city's social medias, the city's website, any of our print materials and our messaging board. So that's what your in-kind services would can would allow as the policy stands today. The second change is we've added in those for-profit businesses and focused on the location's primary business, so for-profit and nonprofit. The last one that I want to bring your attention to is the submissions due forty-five days prior to the event. This change comes when we remove that monetary component to the contributions because we're no longer being cohesive with that with the budget cycle. So we don't have to get it in and get it approved prior to September when you guys read that final budget and adopt the millage. The second, so that's my sponsorship policy breakdown. So now you see all the changes that we've made to that policy. But with all of our sponsorships, we sponsor events and programs, which mostly events all require special event ordinances or special event permits. So the special event policy was adopted way back in the day, and I'll give you a date on the next slide. And then we had an inadvertent deletion of this policy, of this entire chapter to our charter or land development code. And then we had city council give us direction to update and codify this policy. So the original ordinance was adopted in nineteen ninety-two. It was very, very minute. It allowed a very minor adjustment of your actual existing land development code type thing. In, looks like two, two thousand and three, we saw that the chapter thirteen, section five special events was completely removed. We don't know how or why that happened, we couldn't track it down in the minutes, meaning that at this time, we don't have an ordinance, which is why it's so important to bring it back today. Currently, we are, we just wrote down everything that we do, we worked with Mr. Reichman's office. We are going to still maintain the, it's the same submission process, it's still fifty dollars. It still goes through a department review, exactly what we've been doing, it's going to remain consistent. So that's our special event ordinance and that's ordinance six nine one. Our fee resolution. Our fees resolution was proposed by staff to try to produce uniform in-kind service costs. So it was presented in twenty twenty-five, we voted or you voted to move forward with it, it's resolution three eighty-nine dash two five. This screen right here, I want you to see this because there's a lot of questions as to how we come up with the in-kind services. And the truth of the matter is, it's very complex. I have a spreadsheet and every single employee in the entire city, I have their name, how much money they make, so their their hourly rate. And then with finance and HR, we work together to compose something called fringe benefits, which covers their healthcare, covers their retirement contributions and everything like that. So they have a new total. Then I have two columns, one is for regular time, one is for overtime. So if that employee works overtime, I put them in that category, we get the total at the bottom. As you can see on this screen, you have, well, you can't really see, trust me when I say, there's two park maintenance specialists. One may make sixteen dollars an hour, one may make eighteen and work on overtime. Depending on who works your event or program is going to change that total in-kind at the end. So we never really know how much the in-kind services are going to be, we can guesstimate, but it's never precise. We are the only city out of Deland, DeBary, Deltona, County of Volusia, Lake Helen, that does not have a uniform fee schedule at this time. So percentage-wise, we are out there. So for the neighboring jurisdictions, you can see, and this is from your prior presentation, where the other municipalities fall on this list. And I show you this to show you that we are not, you know, charging crazy amounts. This is, this is very competitive compared to our neighbors. So our proposed fees were fifty-five for fire services per person per hour, sixty for police per person per hour, forty for staff per person per hour and same for public works per person per hour. If you look at the actual median range of each one of these departments, you can see that we're really not making much money on this, isn't a money-making effort, it's a, you know, a uniform fee schedule effort. So we're actually under on police. The actual median range of your police officers who would work an event like this is sixty-four, sixty-eight, depending on the person, depending on the shift. We're charging sixty, so that one's, I would say, a bit, quite a bit lower. Again, these are our recommendations. This fee does encompass the employees' base pay, their fringe benefits that we spoke about and the assigned duty passenger vehicle, which means their parks and recreation truck, their public works truck. They're a fire inspector and they have a fire truck, not a big fire truck, a fire truck, that would be covered. When we move into the equipment costs, our message boards, our fire trucks, our police cars, anything that's out of the norm that they wouldn't typically show up in, we would go back to the twenty twenty-three FEMA equipment list, which is a big, big spreadsheet that has what FEMA would charge if you were to say, hey, I have a fire, I want to borrow your fire truck. And that's not a real thing, the fire department's here, I don't want you to think that's a real thing. So, so as you can see, each one is interconnected with the other. So it's important that you see it all as a large picture, which is how we are looking at it tonight. So these are our staff recommendations on the policy changes, the ordinance and the resolution. And I am open to any questions you guys have or any discussion.
Anything from the council?
No, it was very precise, I appreciate that.
Okay, I'm going to dig in.
Yes, ma'am.
So with this three different things, it has a lot of moving parts with events, so. And just because I have experience, I wanted to touch on them. So under the policy, under five B, which is eight A on page two, number five, it says about alcohol beverage sales. Would it be possible to add in to there that they must provide a copy of their receipt of, from the distributor or the store that they bought it from? Because I know that's one of the things that we ran into was to make sure that they have enough alcohol for the Fourth of July.
So these, are you just referencing the special event policy or the sponsorship?
The policy.
So the special event policy, because that the Fourth of July specifically is a city hosted event, we don't turn in a special event policy downstairs to our own permitting department. We can absolutely discuss changes to our alcohol beer and wine vendor policy, but that would be separate towards like fireworks.
So this is for outside entities that put on events?
Yes, ma'am, so this is for any private, private residents that wants an amen, like an exception of what the land development code currently says they can do on their property. So regulating the quantity of beer, wine, whatever they're selling would not be something that we get in nitty-gritty. They select their own vendors, they're responsible to ensure that all insurance is online and everything like that.
Okay, so it doesn't, it's not ours?
Correct, yes.
Okay. The next thing would be, under procedure, you have the things that they need to submit. And one of the things that they need to submit is proposed budget. Shouldn't it say proposed event budget? Because it seems a little bit too much to give you their whole budget of what their organization is doing, that's, that's none of our business. You know what I mean, it should be, what's your budget for the event? What's your proposed budget for the event? And then, you know, after it's over, we see how it goes. Because at the end of the day, if it is a city-sponsored event, then we would want it, we would want to know if it's going to be successful, right?
Absolutely.
But this one we're talking about, it's not city-sponsored, right, correct? With the policies?
This, no, so you have a special event ordinance that is going to impact everyone who wants to hold karaoke, farmers market, things the city has no hand in, the special, the sponsorship policy, so that's the ordinance, is a special event ordinance. The sponsorship policy only talks about events that we sponsor, we give people to work. We would talk about the back-to-school events, we'd talk about the Christmas event, stuff like that, where people want to come in and utilize our park or utilize our own facility and they need something from us.
Right.
The reason why we do have the, not just the event budget, but the full budget is because the council actually requested to have us produce that for each of our applicants to hold them accountable and to ensure that our, at the time when we were doing monetary donations, were being physically, physically spent properly. So I'm happy to remove that, I just want to make sure.
That's my point, since we're not giving monetary donations anymore, we really don't need to know what's in their full budget. It's basically just a, you know, I'm having a Halloween, Halloween's probably not a good example. Blueberry Fest, for example, they fund mostly everything theirself, right? I don't think we give them, do we give them in-kind? I don't remember.
I think we may have given them some in-kind at one time. I think this last year, they paid for everything.
Yeah, the self.
So, you know, it changed over times, I think.
And that's, I mean, that's a good example, that that company has been doing all kinds of things, Bucklers, they do.
Yeah.
So they've been doing this for years, so they can self-sustain. Not everybody can self-sustain, obviously, so they need our help with some monetary things. I just feel like that's a little invasive for someone that, you know. And then the other thing I saw was, well, I guess what I put was, it's really, it's really none of our business. Who cares if they have a hundred thousand dollars in expenses in their event because it's not our event, right? So I just think that's a little invasive. And then, under review, it says a sponsorship committee review. I just remember in the past with the review of the sponsorship committee, it it represents a committee of the administration, public works, parks or Parks and Rec, finance, police and development services. And I just remember going through those rubrics and like one of the questions was, because you know, they they grade all the the groups that are going for the sponsorships. And it said, is it going to create an economic develop, economic impact, right, is that the right word? Yeah, so, and some of them will put, yes, and it didn't. So it's, so, so when I look at that, I was thinking, okay, maybe in the future, since we did vote on our, we talked about last night with the events coordinator, maybe that should be another person eventually that would go into that to tie into it. Because, I mean, no offense, but you're, we're taking our police, we're putting them in there, we're putting in other people that really aren't, they're not doing events, you know what I mean? So they, they're just trying to grade the people by the best they can with the rubric that they were given. So that was the other thing, the other thing with that. And that's it for the policy.
So just to, just to bring it back real quick, just so I make sure I understand, are we wanting to change, make revisions to the rubric that's used to grade? Or are we wanting to change the people that are sitting on the committee?
I, I don't, I'm not saying I want to change it, I just, I think we just need to be a little more aware of what the, what it means.
Okay.
When we go through those things, I see grades and I'm like, that's, it's not true. So that's all I'm saying is, is to pay attention to that. But I don't think we need to change the rubric, no. What was the other one that you asked me?
To amend who's on the committee.
No, no, I don't think so, unless they don't want to do it anymore, but, you know.
So the reason we have what's listed there is because we typically have those departments that are integrated in it. They're going to be police services, they're going to be fire services.
Right.
The events coordinator, just to bring that up, we will be under Parks and Rec. So in the future, once this all goes through and everything comes to fruition, they will be on the committee.
Okay.
So, I mean, I probably will too still be there, but that would be probably our Parks and Recreation representation pending a conversation with Ashley Gay.
Okay. And then, since you wanted to bundle this together, I'm going to do this really quick. The other thing was, the fees.
Yes, ma'am.
So when you, can you bring up that screen again?
This one or the?
That one, I guess. When, when we were, when I was looking at our agenda in there and I was looking at the fees and I was thinking, it shows like Deland, we have that one on there too. Yeah, so when you look, it's like, but we have to, if I remember correctly, we had to go by these fees because of what we spend, right? We're just trying, we're basically trying to break even on that?
Yeah, so, these fees were recommended, this is in comparison to our neighboring cities. The one that was a really good comparison is if you look at police services, DeBary, who is contracted with Volusia Sheriff's Office, they charge sixty dollars per hour per officer to do an event. And that's, that's they charge the city, the city then outsources that, should that be a private event that they're sponsoring or anything like that. If you go into this slide right here, you can see that our average police officer, because again, prior to this, this is what I would do. Don't know who I'm, who I'm going to pick, don't know who's going to pick the shift up, overtime, regular time, sergeant, whatever. So the median of what we pay these officers is sixty-four, sixty-eight. So we said sixty and the police chief also agreed with that because that's what they charge private businesses. Walmart wants an officer to extra patrol on Thanksgiving, they want a special detail, it's sixty dollars per hour per officer. So we're looking for cohesive fees. Again, you can see fires a little more, more than likely, they're going to be driving the fire truck. So that's when we come to this slide and we say it's the assigned vehicle, they're going to bring the fire truck if it's a crew of firefighters, so.
The only reason I ask you is just so we don't short ourselves if that's what we're doing, if we're doing these services for the events. We want them to happen and we want to do the in-kind, but we also want to make sure that we pay for the services through that, right?
Our intent was to cover our costs
Okay.
in an average manner and to get out of the business where people come and tell us who they want to do because they're the lowest paid person on the totem pole.
Right.
We are not in a position to be able to provide that. And, you know, are looking at exactly, I think what you wanted is covering our costs, not making money, not losing money.
Right.
And that would be on the average. On some will make money, on some will lose money depending on the exact person that's going in.
Well, I think the reason I brought it up is because for the last few years, we've been giving a lot of money away and we, we kind of nixed that. And now we're in a position where we're getting ready for the budget and we have all these expenses. And so I was just looking at it like, you know, let's, let's not, you know, create highway robbery here and take from the people, but we need to, we need to cover our expenses. So we're not getting rich off this, but we're also going to cover so it's not coming out of the taxpayers.
The policy is set up so that it can move with what you decide to do in a budget year. So if you ever went back to giving away, you know, a sponsorship money, you could do that, we've got the policy in place. But currently, what we've got is zero dollars cash contribution
A thousand.
and a maximum of one thousand in-kind services.
Correct.
So you're, you have really been extremely fiscally responsible on that.
Okay, thank you. Anything from the council? No, okay, we just need a motion for, are we doing this three motions or one or?
Three, three different items.
Yeah, I mean, my recommendation, Mayor and council, let's go ahead and, and take them individually. So the first action you would take this evening would be on agenda item eight A. Before we get to eight B, of course, we'll need to go through the process we normally follow for adoption of ordinances, where I would read the title and then we follow the normal process, then go to the resolution. But your first action would be on agenda item eight A, which is just the sponsorship policy.
Right.
Now, you just go to the public, of course.
Yes. Okay, so we just need to, we need, Mr. Reichman, you need to read that ordinance then?
No, we're just doing agenda item eight A, Mayor, which is the, your consideration for approval of the sponsorship policy. That's what, all we're doing at this moment.
So we need a motion for that?
And then to the public.
Okay, so we need a motion for that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve changes to the sponsorship policy as presented in this agenda item. A second.
We got a motion, we got a second, any, any comment from the public? See and none, we'll bring it back to Kaylee.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Darnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Graham?
Yes.
Mayor Marks?
Yes, and the approvals of sponsorship policy revisions is complete. All right, so eight B is ordinance at first reading, Mr. Reichman?
Yes, Mayor. Ordinance number six ninety-one is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Orange City, Florida, creating a new chapter ten point three, special events of the city code of ordinances to establish procedures and guidelines for the regulation of special events in the city, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code, severability and providing for an effective date.
Any discussion with the council? We just need a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion, we accept ordinance number six nine one.
At first reading?
First reading.
Second that.
We have a motion, we have a second, any public comment?
You're scheduling your second reading on August twenty-sixth.
Yeah, you want to read that and to the record, thanks.
Approve ordinance number six nine one at first reading and schedule second and final reading for August twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five.
And again, I second, okay.
So we got a motion, we got a second, any public comment on that? See and none, we'll bring it back, Kaylee.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Darnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Mayor Marks?
Yes, and ordinance number six nine one is approved. Sorry. Okay, eight C, now we're doing the resolution number three eight nine dash two five, Mr. Reichman?
Yes, Mayor, this is a resolution of the city council of the city of Orange City, Florida, amending the fee schedule for the provision of in-kind services for city-sponsored special events, repealing all resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict or with and providing for an effective date.
Okay, and we just need a motion for that?
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number three eight nine dash two five, implementing the uniform fee schedule as presented in this agenda.
A second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any public comment? Bring it back to Kaylee for a vote.
Councilmember Darnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Teonsen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Grum?
Yes.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yes.
Mayor Mark?
Yes, and resolution number three eight nine dash two five is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can go home now, right? Okay. Okay, so we're moving on to 8D. Coleman redesign plans. Ashley Gay?
Good evening, mayor and council. Ashley Gay, Parks and Recreation Manager. I would like to say thank you to this council for approving the funds last budget year for, to hire our consultant. You'll be hearing from, um, Ray Lopez, he's with Kimley Horn, okay? So we're talking about Coleman Park. Coleman Park has had many enhancements done. In two thousand seventeen, we had a new playground for the five to twelve-year-olds. That was Mr. Davis prior to me, and his, you know, new trendy playground, um, equipment, which is the large climbing structure, the large nets that most of the parks are kind of going to. So then we moved to twenty nineteen, and we had the, um, Coleman, um, skate park that was put in, and that was, um, matching funds with Echo and Cassie raising the additional fund. So that was our largest, um, to-date, um, project. That was over two hundred thousand dollars, and that was, again, for the skate park. So then, we did have some, um, funds come through for CDBG grants, and we were able to put in a new pavilion. Uh, we made some ADA parking. And so, finally, what happened was, during COVID, we had money to do a restroom, and that didn't go through because of COVID, of course, so. Um, so, we went through and did a Parks master plan, and that was approved by council on twenty-three. And from that point, council directed us to start working on two parks, and Coleman and Valentine were the two parks. So, last year, we started major project into developing Coleman. So, for what I'm gonna share with you is, this is what was in the master plan. And I'm not really gonna go through that, because this is just a conceptual plan that would guide some of the conversation with the consultant. Um, it was a consultant out of Miami, and so they really kind of look at what are the trends, you know, nationwide. And so those, they came up with a whole list of things on the right-hand side. So, again, I don't want you to focus on that. Uh, we're gonna move into our town hall meeting. So, thank you, um, Councilmember Stafford for being there, um, and, and we had lots of participation from the community when they came out to share what they would like to see. So again, what I'm gonna share with you for these next four slides, that doesn't mean we're going to do them. These are just things that the folks that came out for the town hall were suggesting. So, lighting, um, people wanted lighting not only in the parking lot, in the seating area. Of course, we agree with the parking lot, because during events, we have to bring out a light tower. Then lighting for our skate park, which would mean like the riding area, so they can utilize it when it's dark. Then additional tree canopy for shade, you know, that, when I look at that park, I look, it says a lot of shade. But they were suggesting that we put shade on the other side of the, in the retention pond, which I'm not sure, because we have a permit for St. John's for that, so we'd have to look into that. Um, and then, of course, big-ticket item, we know everybody has been requesting a restroom. We wanted to have a dedicated water fountain in that park. Currently, there's one up by the pavilion, so they have to leave the skate park to go up there to get water. On the playground, they're suggesting that we do the rubberize, the pour-in-place surfacing, because currently we have rubber mulch, which is annual maintenance cost of bringing in mulch each year. Then a pump track, I just put the picture to the right, so you knew what a pump track was. Um, again, um, with that park, there is additional land that is to the east of the current park, behind the lift station, but on the west side of the yellow house. So it's not cleared, it's just, you know, full tree canopies are in there right now. So, some folks suggested a, a bowl, which this was a topic of conversation when we actually put in the skate park, is to have this being an additional element. Uh, vending or concession. Currently, none of our parks have concessions where you can vend from, and they thought that would be a good idea. And then actual skate, uh, shade over the playground and shade over the skate park. Suggestion for two to five playground, playground for two to five-year-olds, since the preschool is right next door, which serves zero to five-year-olds. Um, business advertising, um, an, an actual fence that would, um, gate off the entire park. And an enclosed building that was more centered around like an enclosed kind of pavilion for more like intimate settings, as opposed to just the open-air pavilions. So I'm going to turn it over to our consultant. So, um, at the town hall meeting, um, Ms. Stafford and those that attended, they received a plan that was at twenty-five percent. And so, the next slide we're gonna show is gonna actually be at thirty percent. And that's what you're going to be focusing on tonight, on whether, you know, you would like to move forward, or if there's any changes you'd like to be made. And then, what you funded for the coming year is the final plan, because the final plan is going to give us the ability to take that plan and apply for different grants. Echo is really looking for the, the plans to completely be, um, ninety to a hundred percent, and that's where we're hoping to be by the end of next year, for you guys to see the final plan. You guys have, um, this schematic, but I want to give you an actual copy, so that Ray can, uh, share with you the items. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead and I can share.
So again, my name is Ray Lopez. I'm a landscape architect at Kimley Horn. Um, I've been working with Ashley for a couple months now, uh, designing uh, some park improvements, enhancements to our existing Coleman Park. Um, I just wanted to highlight, looking at the site plan, some of the elements I'll run through. Um, so, as Ashley mentioned, a park restroom and storage facility. Uh, this would serve as a, we're proposing two family-style restrooms with a maintenance closet, uh, to help, you know, with storage of maintenance equipment. Uh, an expanded playground area for two to five-year-olds. So currently, we have a, a brand-new playground there, it's just for five to twelve. Uh, so we would be looking to expand that existing playground area to include some additional two to five, uh, playground element equipment. Um, expanded, uh, basketball court with various seating. Uh, currently, the basketball court is right to the out-of-bounds, um, and there's some picnic tables that are kind of often the, offset from the court. Uh, we'd be looking to add, you know, nice circulation around, give it a little bit of an out-of-bounds, and help with, uh, if you have any, uh, different, uh, sporting events, uh, have some seating along the side. Um, and then we'd be looking to resurface the basketball court. Uh, this may lend to some, an opportunity to add some additional games, uh, foursquare, hopscotch, things of that nature. Uh, there's a couple different systems, it could be painted, or there's new products where it's tiled, and you can do some really cool designs on top. Uh, we would be adding an additional fifteen-by-fifteen polygon structure, uh, to match the one that's currently on-site. Uh, this could function for birthday parties, it could be rented out, um, just adds an additional shade element to the park. Um, we are looking to extend the concrete sidewalks that are currently there, uh, to provide better circulation completely around the site, specifically to the restroom facility that's located just in the center um, of the site plan, um, and down, or going north along the east side through the trees is kind of a, a cool nature trail experience. Uh, can a levered skate park shade umbrella, or just various shade elements up against the skate park was, uh, highly desired by the residents at our town hall meeting. Uh, all of the trees you see in red along the east side, we just wanted to highlight, uh, going through this conceptual stage of those are all invasive cam, camper trees, um, that are just continuing to, uh, become established and work along that eastern side. So maybe there's an opportunity to clear some of that out, to provide that nature trail that circulates back to east Blue Springs Ave. Um, and then additional skate park lighting, as Ashley mentioned. Uh, there is lighting currently on, at the park, but it's, it's, again, it's a little offset from the amenities, it's not, uh, directly, um, on some of these proposed features, uh, so we want to increase safety as much as we can. So the next few slides are going to show some of these features. So this is the public restroom facility we're thinking of. Now, the aesthetics may be different in the final product, we probably won't have a barrel tiled roof. Um, but it would have two restrooms with the maintenance storage closet in the center. And then these are some of the proposed two-to-five-year-old, uh, playground equipment. This is, uh, kind of like a music park. Uh, again, trying to do more auditory, uh, playground elements, tactile playground elements with the expansion. This is that basketball court surfacing product we were talking about, where it just lays like tile. Um, it also helps the playground surface, it, when it does rain, it, it stays underneath the tile, so again, it, it helps with safety and, uh, and traction. And then this is a polygon structure that's, again, matches the existing one you currently have on-site, as well as, I believe, at Mill Lake Park, um, to the north. This is another look at the two-to-five playground structure, more of like a jungle gym sort of, uh, equipment, uh, that would have integrated shade elements. And then at the town hall, this was, someone brought up the idea of having a bottle water filling station. So not just a water fountain, but you could bring your Tervis and fill it up at the water fountain for extended stays.
Does people even use regular water fountains anymore since COVID?
I don't. So then some additional features, again, lighting of the skate park, and the riding areas, seating, lighting of the seating areas, the basketball courts, and the parking lots. And then a trail to, to connect the entire park, like I said, extending that concrete nature trail along that eastern, uh, boundary. And then additional security cameras for safety was brought up at the town hall with the family restroom facility. Um, just making sure we have security on that as well.
So, I just want to open it up for any questions, that, go back to the.
What time is, uh, what time does that park close, the skate park?
When it, currently, it's, all of our parks are dusted on.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. And you will be having an ordinance back with us here soon to discuss some, uh, changes.
So then why would we need lighting if we're, if it would be when it gets dark or it's closed anyway?
I, I think it's because the skateboarding community has asked for nighttime hours.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
And what we are proposing, if you'll recollect, um, you, we brought you an ordinance proposing longer hours. And you said, um, once we get the security
Cameras.
cameras installed, and we ran into a problem with electric. We've almost got all of that worked out, and we will bring you back an ordinance that will extend, you know, for your consideration, to extend evening hours.
Yeah.
Because one of the things we're, we're learning is that our parks are used, um, at Mill Lake and at Coleman by walkers who are actually exercising
At night.
at night. Either, you know, after dark when they get home, or first thing in the morning before the sun comes up. And, I mean, they're not up to any harm, they're.
Well, my first thought was, we're talking about kids, though, and after dark, do they really need to be in the park skating? Because I think that's opening up
Yep.
drug deals and trouble, is what I see.
There's also a lot of adults that use that park, I'm just mentioning that. I'm always surprised at the number of grown-ups I see out there skateboarding, but.
Miss Stafford?
Yeah, madam mayor, and at the town hall meeting, it was more adults than kids.
Okay.
It was a lot of adults there.
Interesting.
And if I may say, one more important piece.
Yeah, I just had to ask.
Sorry. Um, this is the one thing Ashley told me to mention.
Just don't want to have another area where the, you know, the cops have to sit there all the time because there's trouble, that's all, you know?
Absolutely.
Right.
And, uh, before, early on in the design process, I just wanted to mention, we did do a pre-app with the Water Management District to see what was even possible, because with the addition of the skate park and the new playground, there's only so much pervious and impervious we can propose. So that's why a lot of the features we are, um, proposing today are more extensions, um, because we have to be very careful with how much pervious we end up putting on the site, so that we don't spark additional, uh, stormwater infrastructure. It would be pretty costly for this, uh, this property, so.
You said the, uh, children's one with the music.
Mm-hmm.
How is that with the weather? How's that gonna hold up? Because I, I'm just assuming it's not gonna be cheap, so, and I know we, we may get a grant. I'm just saying, how does that hold up in weather, I wonder?
Very well, it, it
Okay.
Yes. It, they are meant for outdoor
It's really cool, I just had to ask.
And they do have warranties, I think, I mean, fifteen, twenty years on some of those items.
Okay. Any questions from the council? No? Okay, we have a, um, a poll. You good? Okay, I'd like to call up James Wright for a public comment.
Hi, my name is James Worst, uh, four fifty-five Hickory. I'm actually the one that built Coleman Park. We're almost there. You guys are almost there. Castleberry just spent two million dollars on a skate park. Shade, bathrooms, water, everything. I'll go get you a glass of water from this park, and I'll let you guys see it. After this, we'll go up there. But I'm gonna let you guys know, you guys are so close. All we need is shade, lights. You guys are so close to be one of the gnarliest communities. Like she said, most of them are all adults. I'm thirty-eight years old, I built that park. I got to build it in my community. That's amazing. I love Orange City. You guys have no clue what community we have in skateboarding here. You can go all the way to Orlando, all the way to Jacksonville. Ask about this park, they'll tell you, there's no community like ours. You guys should be happy about that. I am. I bust my butt to make sure that park is one hundred percent safe for not just kids, adults. You talking about drug problems? We don't have that. I got the wonderful part of Orlando, or, uh, Orange City Police Department, they helped me out. I'm really good with the chief, we all know each other. I make sure that everything that goes on, I know about. Somebody spray painted the park, that was our first problem, somebody spray painted it. They went and took it off themselves, and they moved it out of this state because they know. I'm passionate about this park. I love this park. I do all the concrete, I do all the maintenance. I don't ask for nothing from anybody. She bust her butt, he's gonna bust his butt. If you guys can just get us shade and lights, you could put the cameras up, that's gonna deal with your drug problems. We don't have that there. We have such good families that all go there every night. Like, come there on a Saturday, I buy pizza for at least fourteen, fifteen kids that don't have nowhere else to go. That's the only place they have. And I'm being real with you. I go to Hungry Howies, and I have them drop off four pizzas to kids that don't have nowhere else to go. You guys know these kids, you guys drive past them every day, you see them. All I'm asking, I'm not gonna waste your time. I love you guys, I love Orange City, I love where I live. I'm passionate about the park, I know I sound upset, but we're so close. All we need is bathrooms, shade, lights, and a water fountain. You could put the water fountain in front of that bathroom, I know you guys can. I've been there, I understand, I, I understand it. That bowl is not gonna get built. I worked for St. John's Water County. I know they're not gonna let you guys do that. I worked for, when we were building that Coleman Park. I was there from design to every meeting, to actually putting that concrete on the ground. I did. All I'm asking, just think about it, just please, lights, shade. The shade is gonna help us, just because it's summer, the lights go out. Your parks at the splash pad are open till nine. Why can't we have until nine? Their lights don't shut off till nine. Our lights shut off at eight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Love you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I actually do remember you now, from the grand opening.
Thank you.
And thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Okay, bring it back to council, what do you want to do?
So you will have an ordinance, change your ordinance with the park rules, so we're not talking about that this evening. We are looking for a direction to move this thirty percent design forward. If there are elements you would like to take out, or have further consideration for this next step of the process, that will be, you're letting us know now.
So I, I just do have a question, or actually just want to confirm what you said. So you're going, we have thirty percent development on the plans, right? You're moving forward with.
Design.
Design, we have to have that at ninety or eighty percent to qualify for the grant?
Ninety to a hundred to be able to go for echo funding, which is match funding, you know?
Match funding, okay, and so then, and I might have missed it, I was trying to research something else with that. But what is the match that we are looking at as a city for the grant? What does the grant offer that we would match?
So we wouldn't have, we don't have total costs, we, we have, they have preliminary costs on what they would be.
Okay.
But we don't have total costs for any of the, all the elements and that we're proposing at this time. So you'll be voting on that next, when we bring you the final plan.
Okay, and then is the grant, does it have a cap? Do we know that?
It varies from year to year.
Okay.
So we can't really tell you right now.
I got you.
Part of it is dependent upon how much the county of Volusia allows to be put out competitively.
Okay. Okay, fair enough.
Generally, no, generally. We got, in the past, we had echo grants for Phase One and Phase Two of Mill Lake Park. We also received an echo grant for what is constructed out there now at Coleman Park.
Yeah, the skate park.
The skate park, yes.
Yep, okay, thank you, that's all.
So that, that was one of the things I was thinking, so they already gave us a grant for the skate park. Do you think that's going to deter them from, I mean, I know we don't know, we're not, you know?
While you don't know, but we're, you know, and I'm putting out a guess right now, I've met with one of the committee members who have preliminarily been very encouraging about this middle. And I want to say that we as a city government have an excellent track record of completing our grants in a timely manner on budget with no accounting errors, and I think all of that weighs in our favor. And then they require years of maintenance afterwards, and every year that they come to check on our facilities, thank you to Ms. Gay, we pass with flying colors. So in my estimation, we are set up perfectly to be able to apply for a grant when we get ninety percent design plans, which are almost the same as one hundred percent.
Right, exactly, okay, thank you, thanks for clarifying that.
Okay, so you said you need direction, do you need a head nod, do you need a motion, what do you?
We would like a motion that you accept the design plans for Coleman Park as presented. And then with next year's budget, we would be able to move forward for ninety percent design. But we have to have approval of the thirty percent first.
Right, okay, well, I'd like, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the design plan for Coleman Park as presented by Kim Lee and Horn.
A second. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any other public comment? Okay, bring it back to Kaylee.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Darnes?
Yes.
Mayor Mark?
Yes, you got your approval for design, thank you. Okay, moving on to eight E. To approve the contract, P two five three dash two five Legal Services as City Attorney, Dale Arrington.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council, my name is Dale Arrington, I'm the city manager. I'm here because on July fifteenth, you all interviewed three law firms and selected one. The Vos Law Firm that you would like to have as your new city attorney firm. Following that meeting on July fifteenth, we held several meetings and worked in tandem with Vos to develop a new agreement for your consideration that is attached to your agenda item. We believe we have hammered out all of the items for you and have presented you with, in your next year's budget, and of course, the remainder of this year's budget, the funding needed to enter into this contract. We have also worked out a transition plan with our current city attorney, where on, if approved tonight, on August fifteenth, we would begin transferring all the, all the files and, and instruments necessary. And we would pay the Vos firm for half a month in August, and then commencing, dependent upon your future decisions, either at our workshop on August twenty-fifth, or at our August twenty-sixth meeting. Our new city attorney, who moved on me and is now right at my right, Mr. Paul Waters, will be sitting at the dais, dais with you. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, but we are, are ready for you to approve the contract and authorize us to enter into all of the purchase orders that we need.
Bring it back to the council for any discussion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve contract, P two fifty-three dash two five Legal Services as City Attorney with Vos Law Firm, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract and to approve and execute the annual blanket purchase orders for all legal services expenditures as approved by council through the annual budget or amended budget process.
A second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, anything from the public? Okay, seeing none, bring it back for action.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Darnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Mayor Mark?
Yes, and the contract for legal services is approved for Vos Law Firm.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it. Okay, we're moving on to eight F, City Manager Recruitment and Appointment of Interim City Manager.
Thank you again, Dale Arrington, City Manager, current City Manager. So, um, tonight, we're, you know, I do this every time I sit here, or stand here.
Everybody does.
Okay, we're going to really talk about three different things tonight, and, and hopefully take some action on these items. The first thing we're going to do is talk about the appointment of an interim city manager. The second thing we're going to talk about is the process that you follow generally to find a city manager. And then the third thing, which is different from the process, is the method that you would use. And there's a lot of leeway in all of these things. First, I want to talk about the interim city manager, because I think that is the one critical item that you need to begin addressing immediately. And hopefully give us good guidance on what you would like to do at your next meeting. I'm not trying to tout my own horn, or blow my own horn or anything, but it, it would be difficult for an organization to operate without a city manager for any length of time, because who are you going to call? Who are you going to get to pull together all the different departments to work as one? Either to solve a problem or to, to do an, a specific operation. So I, I believe that naming an interim city manager is essential for your maintenance of your day-to-day operations. And I think that's the one thing you really need to focus on. There's different ways you can go about doing this, one is you can select a staff person. And that staff person may or may not be interested in becoming a, your, your next city manager. It really doesn't matter at this juncture. Your second option that I know of is that you can contact ICMA or FCCMA, and they have people they call range riders, who they can, you can set up a temporary contract and bring someone in to help manage your city that has full credentials as a city manager and can plunk into your community. Your third option is that you can look around at former city managers in the area, and there are a number of them, and reach out and tap one of those. Another option is that you can just name someone who you think might be good at it. I have a very strong opinion about this, and, you know, I want to share it with you. And that is that you have a very capable assistant city manager who I think can lead you through this entire interim process. She has worked closely with me for, for the whole time that I've been here. She preceded me as a department director before I got here. She knows the community, she knows the staff members, she has a great deal of knowledge about Orange City, and she has experience. She's well-respected by all of the staff and gets along fine with them. That's just her technical abilities. I think if you look at her character, and you look at her dedication, and her willingness to do what the city council wants, you couldn't find a person with a stronger moral character or integrity to lead the city during this time of change. I think she understands the role of city manager, and it would be, in my opinion, a shame not to take advantage of that. I think she would do you well. So I think that's the one thing you need to get working on. To get yourself in a position to be, have someone to go to starting September one. So I included in your agenda item, an employment agreement for an interim city manager. And of course, you know, that is one that Mr. Reichman and I crafted to address all the normal things that you would find in an employment agreement for an interim city manager. It would need to be modified a little bit, if you reached out and you found a business leader to be there. But it has all the different caveats that you would, or all the different sections in it that you would want to have in a contract. So it goes over the job, the salary, the duties, goes over the work equipment that you typically give to a city manager, such as a phone, a laptop, and a vehicle or a vehicle allowance. Covers dues, training, travel, professional development, because that's a very typical thing in a city manager agreement. It covers the fringe benefits, such as insurance, retirement plans, PTO. And in this particular instance, it states that we will treat them like a regular city employee. Goes over miscellaneous items, and that would be items such as bonding capability and what you do if you get into a person suing the city manager for an action they've taken on your behalf. It, it would be like you treat that person like an employee, and you provide that, that coverage. And then it also covers their termination. And I don't mean termination in a negative way, although it provides for that as well. But it also covers them going back to their previous job if, for some reason, that person did not want to be city manager, or you did not select that person to be a city manager. It guarantees them back their prior employment, basically the way they left, with any cost of living increases that may have gone to that position in the interim. So that employment agreement is there for your consideration. I think it is a very good agreement, if you had problems with it, we can certainly go through those. But it has yet to be negotiated, so it's there as a template for you.
Dale, could I interrupt and just add a couple comments on that? I think it's important to remember that this council does have certain, not restrictions, but obligations to consider in your selection of a city manager, whether it's interim or, or permanent. There are requirements for the position of city manager in both your charter and your code. So your selection is dependent upon the applicant that, that you choose, meeting those requirements. So I just want to make sure that, that you're aware going forward for your decision tonight for the interim, as well as ultimately your decision on the selection of the city manager. This is going to be your most, you, you hire three people.
We're getting good at it, aren't we?
Yeah, you're getting a lot of experience. I would argue and submit that this is your most important hire. And this is the person that runs your city, that.
I mean, you are too.
Well, but I'm just saying from a day-to-day basis, this is the person that everyone depends upon to be the liaison between your policy and, and the implementation of that policy and the public. So obviously, it's, it's very important not to be taken lightly, and I know you're not. The other thing I wanted to, just to emphasize is that, you know, I've been doing this a while, and it is fifty-fifty, I'd say, when someone is selected as an interim, that they go on and become the, the permanent selection. Maybe more, but I mean, it's not, it's not, it's not a, a guarantee. So that's why you've got that provision in there, that if they're not selected, they're not going to be penalized by not being selected. Because basically, if you have a staff person, in this case Christine, coming forward and agreeing to come and help out, we shouldn't have no good deed being punished, is kind of what I'm trying to say. So that's, that's pretty standard language that you're going to find, we didn't pull that, you know, out of the air. That, you'll find that in almost any agreement, and that's for, you know, her protection, but also, so there's a clear understanding of the arrangement that you have with your current employee going forward, so you don't have any confusion later on.
Right.
So, let's say, let's just pretend, now you've got your interim on board and you're ready to go through the process of finding a, a new city manager. It is a time-consuming process, and I've got to say, I've, you know, in researching for this, I've been and read a lot of news articles, and good luck to you guys, sometimes it takes three to four months, sometimes it goes on for a year and is full of all sorts of blowups that happen. So, but the basic process is always the same. First, you need to develop your job description and a list of the qualities that you're looking for in a candidate. Not all city managers are created equal, most of us have different specialties. So when I came here, the city was looking for someone who had done capital projects, because there hadn't been hardly any capital projects here. And I demonstrated my experience to that selecting council, and we immediately started working on a spate of capital projects put together with multiple funding sources. That may be something you want to continue, because you've still got capital projects on your horizon. But there are other things too, do you want someone who specializes? Do you want someone who specializes in budget cutting or a sigma lien? You can put together these types of things that you're looking for. And that is the key to finding the person that you want. So that's a a little bit of an exercise you have to do right up front. And then you need to develop your advertising materials for that and place your ads. Then you accept your applications and you determine who to interview. That is a hard thing to do. When I read the newspaper articles, I saw that the number of applications that were being submitted ranged anywhere from twenty to a hundred. So making that cut and determining who to interview is crucial. Most of the time, you don't want to interview any more than five people. Then you have to, you know, before you do your interviews, you typically do your background checks. And for a city manager, the background checks are rather extensive. It isn't just a quick run. You're checking their finances, you're checking their personal character, you're actually having someone call up, uh check their references and transcribe them for you, you know, on personal references and professional references. Then you're doing your interviewing process, which is oftentimes individual interviews, group interviews, and a community meet and greet. And then then you do your selection, your negotiation, and your contract um approval. And voila, you have a new city manager, so. So how do you accomplish that? That takes you to your method. And um there's, you know, basically, three ways of doing this, and of course, some hybrids associated with it. One is that you can do the whole thing in-house. And I want to say that will be very difficult because it will be the people who the new city manager would be their supervisor of, you know, handling all the references, the reference checks, and making recommendations to you on whether or not they meet the interviewing cut. And I don't think that, you know, my my heart would hurt for the, you know, future personnel director who had to go to work in the same office as someone she didn't recommend. But can be done. Then the other way is to hire an executive search firm. And there are a number of these out. I've already asked our purchasing director to start start looking, oh, there he is. Start start looking at firms. There are some well-known ones in Florida. And there's ones in the southeast that also work in Florida that you can use. You will need to decide, you know, do you wanna limit your search to Florida or the southeast? One of the things about hiring a um executive search professional is that they often already know who may be on the move out there and who may be a good suit for what you're looking for in a candidate. And, you know, whereas a person may be reluctant to submit their application, he may be able to say, I think you're a good fit and I would really encourage you to make this, you know, your submission because I think you would get an interview, which is a big deal, you know, whether or not you're going to get an interview or just be flatly rejected. And another way that I've seen in existence, but do not recommend, is is establishing a community committee to help you make that decision. Either you take their advice and you you're dissatisfied with it, or you don't take their advice and they're mad at you for not taking their advice. And you have too many fingers in the pot. And they tend to look at what they want for the community and not what you are elected to decide is in the best interest of the community. So, you know, it goes back to, you know, the principle of the democracy that you're in is that you're a representative democracy, not a direct democracy. And if you expand your committee too long, you you get a a possibility of being rife with contention that blows apart your process. I wanna say that's happened in two neighboring communities, not gonna name their names, but you can Google it in the newspapers. So there's also, you know, hybrids associated with this. And that is that you, you know, one that may be attractive to you is that you go out and you find an executive search firm that will let you do some of the work yourself. Um, you know, such as developing the brochures, placing the ads in the places that he thinks you need to or she thinks you need to advertise, accepting the applications, and then handing them off to him. You know, so there's some different hybrids that are available where they don't have to do everything, but staff can assist them under his direction. So um so I I'm pretty much talked out on this. I want to go back here. I think the most important thing you need to do tonight is discuss what you wanna do about the appointment of an interim city manager. And then, once you um make that decision, you know, if if you did choose Christine or someone else, we can go back and negotiate and bring it to you at your next regular meeting. And once you have an interim city manager, you can go, phew, you know, really, at that point. And then make a little, you know, take a little bit more time, if you want to, to think about how you want to go about doing this. But I do recommend that you use an executive firm and and maybe go ahead and get your purchasing division working on that so that they can prepare the scope of what that firm would be doing for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Fran?
Um, in terms of the executive search firm, is that a one-shot payment for their services? Or is that an ongoing charge as we go through the process, you know, whatever it is, like you said, they would create?
So typically, you set it out, set it out in stages. It is expensive. You set it out in stages so that so let's say, let's pretend for a moment, you know, you wanna go through all of this, and then you discover that Sue Smith was was or Mike Jones was doing a great job as an interim city manager, and it became apparent to you all, that's who you wanted. You would pay them for their services up to a certain point and dismiss them. So you need to set it out in terms of the receivables you're getting. So you do your contract design, you know, either by receivables or by hourly, you know, because there's a certain, you know, unknown about how many applications they're gonna have to go through, whether it be twenty or one hundred. So you would need to work out your contract details. And, you know, I've seen people either love their executive search firm or hate their executive search firm and wanna start all over again.
Are you talking about the interim or are you talking about the city manager?
Search firm.
I know, but I that's what I'm saying. So you're talking about the fees it would cost to hire that firm.
Yes, that's what I thought. I thought she was asking.
That's what I thought, too. I just wanna make sure we're on the same page.
I'm just projecting, that's gotta be hefty.
I I think so I I've read, um, you know, and I you don't know until you get there. My guesstimate is somewhere around the twenty-five thousand to fifty-thousand-dollar range, depending on how good you guys do. So, you know, it's not a a one-way street. So, you know, if if um, you know, you all, for whatever reason, drug it out for a year, he's gonna charge you more than if you accomplish your mission in four months, so.
Would we, could we wait until we we scan uh in-house who might be interested?
Absolutely.
And then go from there rather than starting early?
If that's what you wanted to do, limit it to in-house candidates.
For for the to start, anyway.
I I would never do it.
I would like to make a suggestion. I I think that we should appoint Christine as the interim. We do not wanna be those two cities that you're not mentioning without a city manager. We need the operations to continue, and obviously, she knows how to do it, right? I think that that would be our first order of business. Secondly, I think that the process of finding the manager, I think that um I think we should go out looking for the executive, how did you say it?
Search firm.
The executive search firm to see what's out there. No offense, Christine, just because, you know, you never know what's out there, right? And we may change our mind, too. Like you said, you we could go a little bit with the interim and then make that decision later, correct?
Absolutely. In fact, that's the way it often goes, if you like the interim and if the interim likes you. So, you know, it's always a two-way street. There may be other people in-house who are interested in applying. But I would open it up to everybody from the very start, if I were in your your position, and not necessarily be in a a super hurry. You know, you have to remember, it's gonna take you thirty to forty-five days to develop your candidate profile. Then you're gonna need to advertise for thirty to forty-five days. Then you're gonna need thirty to forty-five days to sift through your initial batch.
So you went to next year.
Go ahead, Dawn.
And you've got the holidays. Good point, Mr. Graham. Good point.
So I was going to make it pretty easy, and I've gone over this several times and made notations. But what I think is kind of a hybrid is making Christine Davis the interim city manager. We do want someone that knows our city. We could reach out and and grab someone from somewhere else, as you noted, but they don't know our city. Christine knows our city.
Exactly.
So I believe that that would, without a hitch, we can continue on doing what we need to do. As far as an executive search firm, I do think that that is valuable. And I do think that, like you said, we have to get that scope and develop the profile and advertise and all of that stuff with purchasing, they're gonna have to get all of that together for us, and it's gonna take a minute. So during that time, the people who are interested in the position internally can apply for those positions internally, and we can have that, you know, as a a guideline. I think that also our staff should develop the profile and our advertising, if we can find a firm that will allow us, because that will be cheaper on us than having them do it for us, in my opinion. Um, and then at the last part of that, um, where you where, as you said, the method for finding the manager, I guess we've we've already covered it with what I was just saying with an executive search firm. That's just my thought process on the whole thing, and I think that would make sense from where you're standing and explaining it as the city manager. And also, would you be able to, and do you have anything as a um, what is the word I'm looking for? It's not an after-action, but it's pretty much like the profile and who you would hand it off to to be able to assist city staff with developing the profile.
I I could. I could tell you what I think is important.
Sure.
But it's also going to be important that you say what's important.
Absolutely.
So, you know, I I think I think um I I really like your approach. I think it's good. And I think that so, you know, recruit, I I want to say, I it has never been my experience that I see the city manager's position open to in-house candidates only.
Right.
Right.
I I have never seen that, and I have a lot of hesitancy about saying we're opening it to in-house candidates only. If that was not what you were saying.
No.
Okay.
I'm saying during the time that we are establishing who we want to go with as a firm and and the purchasing guidelines and the the contract, because we wanna keep that tight, right? We don't wanna just give them carte blanche and let them charge us for whatever and whenever and however, you know, that, of course, that has to be taken into consideration. I'm saying during that time, we would be able to see if there was anyone in-house that was interested in applying for it, and we would have that knowledge of who might be looking at it if they have credentials.
But you always, you don't establish a start date for your applications.
Right.
You always have that closing date.
Right.
And my experience has been on these high-level jobs, people wait to the last minute to put their name in the arena, in the ring.
Okay.
So.
That is true.
Dana?
Um, I think Christine Davis would be appropriate to appoint for interim city manager. But I also think we need to maybe allow her some time to determine if we want to go ahead and appoint her as city manager. I think because that would give her an opportunity to kind of get into the position, you know, on her own. And if she's if she's interested in something like that and wanted to apply for it, and we would get a good feel for working with her more often than not, it it would give her the opportunity before we go out and start looking and spending a bunch of money. It's just thought.
Did you wanna speak?
Yes, and with the same token for what you just said, if we allow Christine to make the decision once she gets into that position as to whether or not she wants to continue on in that position. Because if we go out, spend more more money, and we're looking at a really tight budget right now, we got advertising, we got a whole lot of other things that's gonna come along with the job search. And when we bring whomever we bring in, she's gonna have to train them, and it's not fair. Me working, and when I had to bring someone that's gonna be my supervisor over me, and I gotta train them to do my job, why wasn't I afforded that opportunity to do that job? And I don't think it would be fair to her. And like everyone said, I go with emotions. No, I go with my love for people and serving the people, not emotions. And I know what I would feel if I had to walk in her shoes. And I think she's well worth it. And Dawn?
Yep. So don't get me wrong, that's not what I said. Basically, Christine would be on-the-job interview pretty much because we would be able to see what she's capable of. We would be able to see what she's bringing to the table. So I'm not saying that I would never consider Christine as a a city manager, that is not what I said. So understand your passion, and I get it, that's not what I was meaning, though. Yeah.
Go ahead, Dale.
So I think, you know, if I were in Christine's shoes, I would wanna interview each one of you. And, you know, go through the the group interview and make sure this is what I wanted. And I think it is in everyone's best interest, you know, let's say it takes a month or two to get to the point where you're hiring an executive firm. Well, that's her on-the-job training time.
Right.
To see that um whether or not she's the right fit for you and whether or not you wanna encourage her to apply. And she wants the job after after she does. So we can do the back-end work of seeing what other cities put in their executive search firm contracts, who we've got going um in this area that is well-respected and considered a good group. We can start looking at how you put together that contract.
Right.
I would urge you to go ahead and start doing that while and moving through the process, knowing how time-consuming it is, rather than having three months and then making a decision that you want to begin that process.
Right.
You will have lost three months, and you may find Christine may find herself in a bad position, not wanting to be interim city manager for a year. Or you may decide during that time Or you may decide during that time, she's not the right person for you, or you may find she's absolutely the perfect person, let's not move forward any further than, than we have gotten. So I wouldn't let grass grow under my feet.
And that was the point I was trying to make.
While you're making that decision.
Exactly.
This is kind of an extension of that, on, on the premise that Christine will accept to be interim. Is there a period of time that we need to wait and see? Because while she's interim, that doesn't mean other people within, um, our personal community couldn't apply for the job, correct?
You have to advertise the job first.
Well, I mean, within, within, within our staff.
So just because the job is vacant, no, you want to know what it is you're looking for and what the job description is. You don't advertise, um, any job in our city government without having some details as to what you're looking for in that person.
But couldn't she decide within several weeks, this is it, this is what I wanna do?
I don't think she could. I don't know. I'm not-
How long have you been assistant?
Uh, two years and, oh, sorry.
Uh, two years and like four months.
Okay. Just wanted to give you all a roundabout of that. And, and, and I think it goes back to what Dale said, um, you know, give her a chance to get in there. You know, let her see what she can do, right? We're not without, to be fair. I received a call from her today, I hope you don't mind me saying this, but she was very honest about that she was interested in the position, but, um, she's had her thirty years all in ready, which I'm very jealous, um, but she's not ready to retire yet. And she expressed that she would have seven more years, at least.
Three to seven.
Yeah.
Three to seven.
Three to seven.
Three to seven, okay. I just want you all to know this, and, and that, uh, if we do decide to go out for a search, that she would not apply for the position because she didn't want to, um, compete with that. Is that the right way to put it?
I felt that if you decided to go out for a search, that it might be in my best interest, knowing I want three to seven years, to not have the new incoming city manager think, oh, I got the job she wanted, and then having to start that, my relationship with my new boss that way. So, um, and my main expression was, I'm here to support this council. I do not want to divide this council in any way. I've worked, uh, obviously, as she mentioned, I have my thirty years.
Right.
Um, and plus, and, but I'm fifty-five on the record, no shame. Um, and I'm not ready to retire, and I would like to leave, as I came into the city, on a positive, good note. Um, whatever that takes on my behalf, uh, I'm willing to do and to be supportive of the, the process and the council's decision.
And she's interested, but like Dale said, she needs to get to know us, too.
Well, a- as this is news to me, Christine, so I've got to tell you, all along, I've worked under the, um, impression that you would be willing to apply and that you would take the interim position.
Definitely will take the interim position for as little as long as they need.
Well, what is it, she won't take the interim position if-
No, no, she will take the interim position, but she's saying that if we do go out for an executive search, then she doesn't, she wants to go back to her regular job. She does not wanna apply.
Necessarily apply if you go out to, for a search, whether it's in-house or through the, uh, the executive search. I would not necessarily apply.
Exactly. Right.
Got you.
So, and then I wanna-
I'm probably ninety-five percent sure, but I do, uh, I, I, it's just not a situation I've put myself through. We've, it's, it's the first time we've had an assistant city manager. Um, and I just know my long-term goal is to be supportive and not necessarily have a new city manager come in and maybe feel that they got the job I wanted. And it, it's, it's an honor that you all have expressed your confidence in my ability to be your interim. I appreciate that, and I will serve in any way, um, I can to facilitate.
And before I go to Mr. Reishman, I just wanted to say that she, what she just said was, she's not gonna be upset if someone has to train, if she has to train somebody. I mean, if you hire somebody that is high-level, has been a city manager before, you're not really gonna have to train them. You're just, they're just gonna have to acclimate with what Orange City is, and that's, Christine is, knows what Orange City is.
I have a lot of history here.
Right, so she would be very helpful in that, if that's what we decide to do.
I shared that with Dale when she was here. I've worked with every city manager this city has ever had, with the exception of the very first one.
Right.
And I have managed to have a wonderful relationship with all of them. And I would, uh, I would hope I could continue to do that, whether it's as your city manager, as your interim, or as your assistant city manager.
Mr. Reishman?
Just a couple of comments, and I apologize, this doesn't really have to do with legal. This is based upon watching this process many, many times that you're about to, and, and to go through. My first observation comment is that you were extremely fortunate to have someone like Christine who is available to become your interim city manager.
Absolutely.
Most local governments are not so fortunate. She che- checks all the boxes that would be necessary to do the job that you are considering for her this evening as the interim city manager. No, no limitations on that. Getting down in the weeds at the end of the day, some, some, I won't be here when you're going through the process of thinking what you want, what are the, some of the considerations that you should, um, have and make when you're looking for a permanent person to replace Dale and then Christine. Couple of things. I would suggest you look at their backgrounds, not just recently, but do they come from a finance background? Do they come from a planning development background? Because a lot of times, there'll be one or the other. Do they come from a public safety background? And the reason I mention that is because generally speaking, those types of candidates have different approaches to doing the job as a city manager, and they have different core areas of expertise. Kinda goes back to what Dale was saying.
About capital.
A lot depends upon what are the things that you're going to need from that city manager. Dale, you mentioned, you know, development and that sort of thing. Well, if you've got someone that has a background in public safety, they'll be great with your, with police and fire, but maybe not as great in developing a budget. And you have been so blessed with having Dale and Christine bring to you exemplary budgets for your consideration and for your approval. I mean, top-notch. As, 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 as much as you're going to expect in any size of a city. So though, I would suggest, in, when you get to that point, take that into consideration. The other thing I would mention is, just two more. One is, 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 is the applicant from Florida or not from Florida? You're going to get, if you go out, you're gonna get a lot of applications from Washington State or, or Virginia. And, and they are probably great candidates, but this job is a very complicated job. And a lot of it has to do with knowledge of Florida law, and there's a bunch of it, and it changes every year. And the learning curve on that is super-fast and super-steep. So, just ask you to take that into consideration. And the last thing is, obviously competency is number one, but this is a relationship position as well. And you guys are really lucky to have Dale Arrington, who has the ability to, to deal with staff, to deal with the public, and to deal with her bosses. And that is tough, to do all three of those in the same person. So, just ask you to take those into consideration.
So.
Good point.
Ma- Meg, as I understand the situation, you still have all of these choices in front of you. And it's Christine's choice as to whether or not she wants to apply. And it would be your choice of whether or not you want to go forward, you know, with this, um, executive search. And even if you started the executive search firm, if you decided Christine was your person, you could call it off without her tendering an application. And oftentimes, you find that is the way it's done, so.
Because it takes a while, if you wanna do it.
Well, it does, you know. Christine would not have to, she would be your known quantity, and you, you know, for lack of a better term, she would be like your wingman. She would be your ace in the hole against whomever else you were measuring, and she wouldn't have to make the formal application. Um, and hopefully, within the three months that it gets you geared up to that, it would become evident to you. Um, you could always postpone, um, what you wanna do and just make it a longer process.
I'm not interested in that.
You know, where you don't do anything for three months and give it a wing this way. Which I think is what Ms. Stafford was suggesting. Just cool your heels, appoint her interim, see if, if that works out, and if not, then you move forward with your executive search. Or you can start working on developing your executive search, um.
Didn't you say earlier, most cities don't do that? They get started right now.
Yes.
And then that way, you can call it off if you want to, but it takes time. That's right.
And there is some risk associated with it, and that you would be up against, um, you know, owing some fees that you're not going to recoup. And I would like to point out that that's exactly what we did, I believe, with Melanie Behringer? Or was it with Kaylee?
It was Melanie, probably.
With Melanie Behringer, we, you know, um, had been the acting city man, or the acting city clerk for a while. We had a search firm on that.
Yes.
It was SGR, is that correct?
I'm unsure about Melanie's. Um, mine was Slavin.
Slavin?
Slavin.
Yeah.
And I will say that I'm actually looking at that agenda item currently. Um, and I would say that Dale's price points are probably correct. Um, because the recruitment in twenty, when was this? Twenty twenty-two, it was around thirty thousand dollars, and that was not including any type of, like, travel expenses, um, reimbursements for interviews and everything. Um, so I would say that Dale's, you know, twenty-five to fifty thousand is probably on the higher end. It's correct. And that took about a year.
I've got one more question. I don't, uh, personally, I'm not worried about the money with this, 'cause this is a really important position, and you get what you pay for. So, you know, uh, if, we're trimming on all this other stuff. We're doing our best, but when it comes to this, it's not something that we should trim on. We really need to think about, like Dale said, what do we want? Which we don't probably even know at this moment, right? I'm just gonna say it, right? We, uh, it sounds like we do want Christine to be our interim, um, from what I'm hearing from the dais here. And, um, you know, I, when you brought up Melanie, I'm just gonna use that as an example, um, and Kaylee, we did do that. We had searches, and then we ended up going in-house and, and hiring in-house, um, employees, right? Kaylee and Melanie?
I think you called off Kaylee first.
Did we?
I think we terminated that.
We went almost to interviews.
We didn't make it there?
We did not make it all the way to interviews. Um, it was like shortly before interviews where, yeah, the motion was made to just appoint me as the city clerk and then negotiate.
And that was a local in-house search, right? Or was that an out? Okay, just wanna make sure.
That was, um-
'Cause if I recall, I feel like we looked at resumes, but we did not interview. Does that sound right?
You all were in the process of picking which, um, applicants you all were going to interview, because I, I believe all of them, except for three of us, were outside of Florida.
Okay. Dawn, you wanna say something?
So, I think, like, you mentioned, the most important thing that we're looking tonight is to find an interim city manager, and I think that, like you said, I think we're all in agreement as far as it goes with Christine. And if she's willing to do it, I think that that would be our smartest thing to do as a council and for the city. Um, and as Ms. Arrington stated, it takes about forty-five to sixty days to get all your ducks in a row when you are looking to find an executive search firm and get the things together for that. We're not saying we're spending the money, we're just saying we're getting prepared to spend the money. We may decide we don't have to spend the money. So that was where I was going with it. If that doesn't make sense, I guess it doesn't make sense, but that's what I was talking about, too, and so we could see during that timeframe, the forty-five to sixty days, how we're moving along, right?
Yeah.
So.
I mean, she may not like it in sixty days.
Might not like us, right?
The extra hours might be too much.
And we might decide, you know what, we don't need to move forward with the purchasing of an executive search firm. Just saying. That's kinda where I was going with the whole thing.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
So, does that, does that, so, we got three questions here, okay? We know the number one's answer already, right? The process of finding the manager, are we gonna wait for how long and then decide? 'Cause I think that's what we're asking tonight, is what, what's the next?
The, the process, if you wanna interview anybody at all, is always the same. Advertise. You don't need to make a decision on that. The process, you need to make a decision on your method and timing.
Right. So, if we appoint, from what I understand, and it's kind of the same way we do it with senior staff, where I work, is that we appoint and we have someone in that senior level position, because it is an important position, and you don't just, you know, fill it, right? You take your time and you do what's the smart thing to do, and you put an interim in. And then you decide when you're going to post it, and that would go towards the information that we're now gathering to get prepared for if we're gonna do an executive search or if we're going to just open it up and say, okay, now we're posting, we kinda know what we want.
Yeah.
We post it for ten days, twenty days, whatever is our charter, I have no idea. And then we just finish from there. Is that what it ma-
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
I think, I think what I hear, everybody wants Christine. Christine wants the interim city manager position.
Right.
You, you say, Dale, go back and bring me a contract for your next meeting with Christine being named as the interim city manager.
Right.
And Dale and David, start gathering the information together
Right.
on who is available for an executive search firm and what, what needs to be put in that scope.
Right.
Remember how we did Voss Law Firm? You had to look at that scope first and decide if that's even what you wanted. And if you wait until, um, we get our new HR director on, um, and I can certainly make some notes, but she can query each one of you and you as a group as to what characteristics you want out of a city manager.
Right.
You know, the items that Bill was talking about, and start working on that. And then if you decide to go for an executive search firm, you would have your scope. You would have, um, you know, your process laid out and who the potential candidates are for that.
Right.
Because it's not over, or not contemplated to be over fifty thousand dollars, we don't have to go for a formal RFP. Is that correct? So, you know, it's a different process than we were looking at for our attorneys. Staff would come to you with potential, um, people to deal with the scope. And then we would negotiate the contract with your selected firm.
So am I hearing that you do not need a timeframe right now? We could just direct you to gather that stuff, and then we can decide at a later date when you bring us back that data, right? Okay, so I make sure.
Or Christine can bring it back to you.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's right. Well, you're right down the street.
Yeah.
I'm just kidding.
We, we can do a swimming pool party at my house.
You got a pool?
Yeah, I do.
I just wanted to add one comment. I don't mean to sound prejudicial. I've celebrated my twenty-ninth anniversary of being a Floridian this past July. Woo-hoo! But, um, and, and I just came from New York for a family thing. Would I go back and live there? No. So being sounding president, presidential, right, prejudicial, I would want somebody to be from Florida, because this is a whole different entity down here, and also to be on, you know, working within, with others for the good of our community. And I, I, I have to say, I would wanna lean on somebody being from Florida to be-
Florida experience would be important.
Yeah, really, I really do believe that. She's a Floridian. She's a Floridian.
Okay, so do you have direction then from this, or?
Yes, I'll go back and meet with Christine, and we'll get a contract to, for you for an interim city manager position for next meeting.
Perfect.
And Bana Mayor, because you're not making any final decisions this evening, you're not required to take public comment on this, obviously at the next meeting at that point, before you enter into any formal contract with Christine. At that point in time, you would be required under Florida law to take public comment.
You were reading my mind, thank you. Okay, with that being said, we're gonna move on to number nine, city manager reports.
Dale Arrington, city manager. Our next meeting is tentatively your second budget workshop on August twenty-fifth. And I was just wondering if in, in between the last twenty-four hours, you all had a chance to go through the additional materials that were sent to you and whether or not you knew if you wanted that meeting or not.
I didn't go through it yet. I haven't gone through it piece by piece, and I'm not planning on doing it. I just wanted to kind of like skim through, and I, I like that we have it available. And I like that if someone asks, we have it available, that's all.
Did you want the second workshop meeting?
Do we, I don't, I don't.
I don't either.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
Okay. It just may mean you'll have a longer discussion at your budget hearings if you're not all in agreement.
Right.
And, and Fran, we can meet later and go through the decisions that were made.
Yeah, I just hope I can listen online.
Absolutely, the meetings are available on YouTube, but I heard from the audience tonight, we didn't all talk into our monks.
Yes.
You have to turn it up a little bit.
I can send you the link to the YouTube video, but we also have a separate audio recording as well. So, if for any reason that there's any problem with the YouTube video itself, anybody, feel free to reach out to me, Kaylee Burleson, City Clerk, and I'm happy to send over the actual audio file.
And I want to note, if you, because you weren't here, Fran, it was a pretty, pretty productive meeting. So, you know, you'll, you're gonna see a lot of things in there that are important. And I say that for the public too, if they haven't seen it. Okay, we're gonna move on to, oh, sorry.
You know, I, I feel compelled to address some of the comments that were made by Mr. Hewitt.
Oh, yeah.
Only because we have no plans to tear down City Hall. You know, when there is a conceptual plan presented, which is what the master facility plan was, I think they were looking at a fifty-year horizon. And during the discussion where the master plan was accepted, council made it abundantly clear during discussion that for the next foreseeable future, the working plan would be as follows. Maintain City Hall in its current location. Two, we need a new police station, Ohio Avenue. Three, Station sixty-eight, which is the mobile home on Harley Strickland. Needs to be replaced, it is not Station sixty-seven. Three, or four, we need a new public works facility. Five, if we ever build a bigger wave of hall at another location to serve the senior centers, we would repurpose that building by moving the finance department in it so that they're all on one floor. And the build, and the development services department and engineering department run by Bilal would occupy City Hall. And, it's very complicated. The manager's office and the clerk's office would move over to the police department to facilitate that. And the clerk's office would become simply storage.
Right.
And that was it. So. I, you know, I don't know what's available online, it's been a hot minute since I've looked at it. But you can't just look at the master plan without also reading the minutes or having been a participant in that.
Right. So what you said, I remember all that, that's why I was like, what? City Hall, we, I, I think we had a discussion about, in the future, if we ever did build another City Hall, that we would turn that into a museum. If we grew too big to be in these facilities, right? Is that correct?
It was, we were never going to take that building down.
Exactly.
That building, you know, is the heart of our city. And we would like to continue using it as a municipal building for as long as we could.
Can you touch on the roof?
No, I can't, because it's new to me. I, I, you know, we have always taken whatever Mr. Idell says very seriously. And I believe that we would go take a look and see what we can see. If we need to, we can, you know,
Is he still, is he still a consultant or a volunteer?
No.
Okay, just want to make sure.
And, and, you know, I, I have not heard from Mr. Idell for, from months. And, no. And, and I would not recommend using his consulting services again.
And then one more question for you, I'm sorry, but he said something about adding another lift station. Can you explain that?
No, I can't. Not, not at this. I, I think he is talking about a storm lift station.
Yeah.
Because we have a storm lift station. And our parking lot was only a conceptual design, it hasn't even been out for final design. So I don't think we're far enough along on that.
I just wanted to answer that, so, if he's listening, he can hear that.
I could be wrong, but to the best of my knowledge, at this point, we don't even have beyond a conceptual design of that, that parking lot.
Thank you. Any other questions for the manager?
Do you recollect the design stage of the parking lot?
I would have to ask Joe.
Yeah, we, we, we don't know.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Is there any other questions for the manager? No, okay. Moving on to the city clerk.
Enjoy your conference.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Call me if you have any questions or concerns, but everything should be in your binders, and you guys should be all good to go.
And make sure when you get there that you show your tax exempt thing, because that's.
It's in your binder, the hotel has requested that I fill out forms and send them back to the, I can't remember his title exactly, but he's over the group reservations. So I'll, I'll be completing those tomorrow morning and sending them off as well, so. But there are copies of your tax exempt form in your binders as well.
Yeah. Okay.
Is this what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am?
Yes.
I also emailed them a copy.
That's a tax exempt form, Fran. You have to, when you check in with your, with your card. Okay, city attorney?
Just want to comment that you guys are in great hands with the decisions that you have made in the last month, moving forward with your interim city manager and your new city law firm. And I have no doubt that you'll move, the transition will be very smooth and, and you'll be able to move along with no interruptions whatsoever. I will miss you all, and I wish you all the best of luck.
We're going to share.
Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
We'll hear the second and fourth Tuesday, you can come and sit and.
If there are no, if there are no tea times available.
I want to say thank you for everything. You have been phenomenal. We are gonna miss you. I'm gonna miss your Christmas jams and all that too, I'm just gonna say that. And thank you for, you know, being the backbone of us to keep us straight and, and out of trouble. You know, it's just, I can't say enough. I'm a little sad that you didn't want a party, because I like to have a party for you, but he doesn't like to spotlight everybody, so, but. But we like to party now, just kidding. Anyways, good luck with everything, enjoy your retirement, and, you know, be happy, right?
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
For keeping the same cell phone number.
Curious.
There's a lot of institutional knowledge there.
Thank you, mayor.
Any new business? Dawn?
I do have something. So, I was looking around today, and I ran across something from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. There is a grant called the Resilient Florida Program. Are you familiar with that, Dale? You are?
Yes. We did our vulnerability assessment using those grant funds.
Okay.
And I want to say, we adopted our vulnerability assessment late spring, summer of last year. And that was the first step we needed to take to get eligible for other grants from that program.
Okay. Because I was looking at, I'm sorry, I was looking at twenty-four, twenty-five, and they didn't show an award for Orange City, it showed neighboring cities. But they are available now for the twenty-five, twenty-six.
And their deadline, I think, is coming, yes. And we have so many grants coming back in.
Okay.
Right now, I think you would overstretch our ability to handle additional money to get things done. You know, we're waiting on our grants for the basin studies and participating on that. We're doing the Transform three eighty-six grant. And I believe Bilal has even gotten, we're in position and waiting for paperwork on our Graves Avenue grant, which is going to be a monumental project. And because that's not timely, I believe Bilal has gotten us in position to be number one on the list for tiger dams in case we get a bad rain. And we don't want to shut down Graves Avenue for eight weeks to three months. So.
Do you remember when I said to you, I saw that on the news, and you were like, what is that?
Yeah, I do.
Now we're getting them.
Well, we hope we're getting them.
Maybe.
But we're right at the top. So I'm a little wary of trying to do another application when we're still trying to wrap up.
Yeah, no, I get it. And that's why we need a grant writer, again. Because these, I mean, that's like three hundred grand. There's just things out there, it would be nice if we could.
I agree. So, you know, if you look at our, our vulnerability assessment, which was done with the resilience grants through Woodard and Curran, it's unbelievable how accurate it was of what will happen with a thousand-year storm. But we have, have not begun to assess what would we do to affect some of the changes that are called for in that vulnerability study. Which are basically elevating major buildings.
Right. I got you. All right, I just thought I'd bring it up, because I saw it and I was just curious.
Any other new business? I got a couple things. We've been pushing the app, the Orange City app. And I think it would be a good idea to add on there that when people go on the app, they can look up to see who their representative is. So, you know, a lot of people don't even know who their reps are, or who their council people are. And it would be nice to go in, and I don't know what's involved in that, but if we can find a way to add that into the app where they can go in and push a button and, and put their address in and it pops up, you know, Fran Darms is your councilwoman, you know, things like that, so they know who to direct to, I think that would help with the residents knowing who their rep is. So that was one thing I wanted to ask if we could bring back to do.
I think it's similar to.
Let's find out if it's possible and just do a report on it.
Okay, that sounds good. Is, is it council okay with that? Okay. Yeah, that's, I said, I wanted to see if it was possible. The other thing is, I wanted to see if we can look into bringing back discussing a, a charter review. Because we had talked about that we need to do some things that affect the clerk's office and, you know, when the, the voting comes and all that, the. Okay, so we wait till next, okay. Okay, well, we're gonna, we're gonna get your feet wet like that, okay?
I agree, but I'm unsure.
You're off the hook, Bill.
We started soon if we would be able to get it on the ballot for twenty twenty-six. It would, it would be extremely tight. And I, I'm unsure of that.
Yeah, that's what we discussed.
And I mean.
It's possible, maybe, that's why I wanted to bring it up now.
I just want to give you all just an honest answer on that, that it may be the twenty twenty-eight ballot that, that charter, you know, if there were any changes.
Or a special ballot.
Or a special ballot.
You know, I think, I think that your new legal counsel will need to look at when all is involved in sitting the committee, how many committee meetings. The committee takes on its own timeframe.
Right.
Uh, which I think is what Kaylee's referencing. And in order to get on the ballot, you normally need to have your language to the supervisor of elections three months ahead of time.
Mayor, for what it's worth, also, a lot of times you'll have a charter review where its task is to look at the entire charter.
Right.
It's take a lot, that takes a lot of time.
Right.
A lot of times I've seen charters review where, where it's, it's very narrow, what they're, what they're being, they're giving direction, but you, you give them direction. Because they're basically kind of like your, your, they're a recommendation committee. The final decision is gonna be yours, obviously, on what, what would go forward. So, I mean, I've seen charter review committees that they're told just to look at Chapter seven and Chapter nine.
Yeah.
Or something like that.
I can't remember when our last charter review was, but it's been a long time, a very long time. So that's why I wanted to bring it up. Okay. All right. All right, we're moving on to approval amendments, we already did that. Council, mayor's comments. Anybody have any comments?
I got one.
Vice mayor?
Yes, um, as you all know, we're gonna be leaving, it will be in Orlando, but Thursday, the West Volusia League and the Spanish League both have ribbon cuttings on Thursday. And they said they'd really appreciate if someone from the city could, could attend. So I'm just putting it out there, because none of us are gonna be around.
I believe I, that's the one I had asked you about.
Um, one is the, the boat park on Rhode Island.
One I know of.
Okay, the other one is that new restaurant that opened up next to Fancy Fruit on seventeen ninety-two.
The bakery.
Bakery?
The bakery.
That's, that's, that's the Spanish.
That's the, yeah.
The Spanish.
So those are the two ribbon cuttings, I think one's at noon and one's at five, I think, I don't know.
Dale, I can send you the details tomorrow, and I, I would be able to attend as well.
Well, I knew you were already doing the other one, but, yeah. And I reached out to them, they were thankful, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I think most of us are leaving today or tomorrow, right? So we, that would be great if we could get, I'm leaving as soon as this meeting's over, so. But I was gonna say, it would be great if we could have us.
Well, that's good, so that's all they wanted.
And it's a bakery, so it's not painful.
Yeah, that, that one might be sweet. I'm just saying.
Ay yi yi.
It has been ranting and raving about it so far in every post that I've seen, I've actually wanted to go try it, so.
There you go.
It's actually a restaurant, I've seen their menu.
Okay, all right, uh, we just need a motion to adjourn.
Would like to make a motion to adjourn, mayor?
A second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Meeting adjourned.